I think it's gonna be a ten dollar charge, but let me double check.
Okay, so no.
Yeah, I'll take your.
Okay, thank you, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are you all right?
Sir?
You all right?
He's sitting like you in deep thought.
I just roll it, alright?
Hmm, yeah. All right, Brian, you said it right. I call the order, we're gonna go ahead, get started. Frank, say a little word, Frank.
Just pray. Oh, thank you for everything that you do for us, and thank you for allowing us to live in Jackson County. Thank you for everything that we see, we appreciate it. God, we ask that you lead, guide, and direct us on every decision we make today. Thank you, Father, Christ, and amen.
Amen.
But with the life of the United States of America and the Lord, we will change one nation, under God, indivisible, in the name of our Lord.
Let's move the board approval of use of the courthouse to the top. Sure, that'd be pretty quick.
Make a motion for approval.
Motion for approval in a second. Mr. Chris, Dr. Spire, all in favor, raise a hand. All sort of same sign, move along. That'll pretty well get it. Alright, that's.
I see how one thing I wanna bring here.
Alright, you go around.
We do that, we do that last, you know, it started on the bottom. So, I have a little problem and, uh, the road department went out and looked over on seventy seven Tri-County. The warning sign and the curb where the stop is bad. And over on Orson Road, there's a warning and a stop there, the stop sign, they had been working several weeks. He went over and looked and he says, it's that whole unit not work fixing, and it's better to just replace the unit. And I got a price on it, he got several prices, but the lowest was twenty-four, two thousand four hundred and ten dollars. And, um, if I could, say, if I could use my discretionary money, I'm asking for approval for that. Pay for it.
I would think that would be a qualified use of that, for those discretionary dollars, Sarah, is that correct? And those discretionary can, his discretionary funds be used for the replacement of.
A warning sign, one stop, one stop light sign, blinking sign, and one warning.
Yeah, I would look that up, Dr.
Discretionary, yes, sir.
Okay, well, I make a motion.
Speak to the road people that are there right there, and you tell them about where you are.
Well, he knows about it.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to approve, it's been discretionary money for signs, is that the way you want it worked?
Very good, thank you.
All in favor, raise the right hand, all opposed, got to fix the road signs. Alright? Let me get my glasses right and read. Alright, I guess we're gonna talk about the administrative position. Uh, I'll say a few words before we get started. First of all, that's a pretty important position, I'm sure one knows this, I'm sure Ms. Daniels could tell us that. And at the same time, we're fixing to push budget time, we're fixing to put, and I, I would correct my English and do away with the fiction. And say we're about to go into two or three different directions with all this stuff, and it's gonna be pretty. So, I, I see where we got this county, uh, administration that put this approved in five, from five twenty-two to six twenty-two. Advertised the thirty days, I'm not sure that we're gonna be able to meet that, so we better think about, uh, waiving the rules and doing away with that part of this meeting. And, uh, I, I would rather see what the board wanted to do before we do that.
Well, uh, if I'm Mike, um, you know, when, when I met with Ms. Daniels, I guess it was last Monday, and she, uh, informed me that, uh, uh, of the situation, of her situation, in fact, that she would be resigning. Um, of course, my, my mind began going through some of the same things that you just pointed out. This is, uh, uh, obviously a, a, a time of importance that we moved pretty quickly on this. I will say there was, you know, there was one name that popped into my mind, uh, immediately. And, uh, uh, it is a person, uh, that I think, uh, uh, if this board, uh, agreed, uh, it's a, it's a person that, uh, as I looked through the job description and the qualifications, this one particular person meets those qualifications tremendously. And, um, uh, I went ahead and, and took it upon myself just to reach out to this person.
That's fine.
Just to see if, uh, he may be interested, because again, I, I feel like he fits the bill. I feel like he would be able to, uh, uh, come in, uh, very quickly, uh, not miss a beat, uh, he's local, uh, he's got a lot of experience. Um, and I, I guess my point of saying all this is, um, if in relation to try and move forward with this process as quickly as possible, to get somebody on board uh, as quickly as possible, so I can get geared up to the, uh, in, in, uh, with the budget, uh, get moving on some of the other things that we've got, uh, in line, we've got, uh, the, the waste management, uh, Waste Pro, uh, situation that's coming up. If we could, uh, move forward with getting this person hired, whomever it is, soon as possible, we'd be, we'd be better off.
Well, I'm in agreement with you.
And I don't mind going ahead and sharing this person's name if it's okay.
If you will.
Um, the, the person that I'm thinking of is Jim Dean. Uh, Jim Dean, I, as you probably all know, I worked with Jim, uh, at the city for about fifteen years. I was actually, when, uh, uh, we hired Jim Dean, I had the opportunity to work with, uh, Julian Learmore and a number of other city managers, uh, Phil McCrery, Louis Harris, uh, Harold Emrick, who was former county administrator here, uh, Ellie Johnson, and, uh, I put Jim at the top of the class. Uh, he's, uh, I think he's got the type of experience in budgeting, he's got experience in infrastructure, he's got experience in running a, uh, city of Marianna, which is not as large as the county, but, uh, certainly a large organization, uh, very comparable to the county. Uh, he's got experience in working with, uh, Chief Hayes Baggett and, uh, Marianna Police Department. Um, Jim, it was, it was not surprising to me that Jim indicated in my conversation with him that he would be interested if, uh, if the counties were to move forward with, uh, uh, replacing, uh, Ms. Daniels with, uh, a new administrator. And I think if we can figure out a way of, uh, of, of hiring him, he's local, he knows the county, he knows the cities, um, it, it, I, it would not be a short-term position, Mr. Chairman, but I don't think that, uh, that he is looking for twenty-year position either, uh, which may fit very well for what we're looking for.
Well, I would say that I've been lockstep with you, I don't know Mr. Dean since he was a young man. I think he came here in the seventies with his daddy when he was a young boy. And I've been exposed to him as a child and exposed to him as a grown man and what he has been able to do. So, I, I am in agreement with you in a hundred percent of the ways, uh, economically as well. And I think that would work, probably can work, make it work out, though I'm not opposed to that at all. Go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'll tell you where I'm at on this.
Okay.
Uh, if, if this had occurred at a different time of the year, it may have been a little different. But we are fixing to get in the busiest part of our business, with the budget. Uh, we need somebody that understands budgets, understands how we've done what we need to do. Uh, I'm concerned about what's going to happen in Tallahassee.
Well, we should all, but.
They're sitting over there, not even, what I'm reading, not even meeting at this time. Uh, I don't think they have a scheduled meeting till after Memorial Day. Uh, so I think we have to get somebody soon, I think we have to get somebody who knows what they're doing. And I think we have to get somebody who knows what we're doing and can sort of hit the ground running, as they say.
That's correct, Bill.
I, I think that, uh, same thing, I think, like I say, budget time coming up and it's gonna be kinda hard without somebody to help guide us along, and, and I know, I've known him for a pretty good while, and I know he worked with the city for a long time. And I have never heard anything bad about him, and he wouldn't have stayed with the city if there'd been something bad, and I think a good choice, if he's willing to take it. And I, 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 I support that.
Dr. Spire?
Yes, slightly different, okay? I, uh, I know Mr. Dean very well, very competent person, very likable person, very capable person. But we talk about appointing someone at the highest level of county government without even interviewing other individuals. I have a, a little bit of argument with that. I think other people should be allowed the opportunity to apply. If you're talking about putting him in on an interim basis and giving other folks an opportunity to apply, uh, if he competes for the job, then I have no issue with that. But just to pluck someone without giving anyone else that they're going to be qualified, the opportunity to compete, I don't think that's right.
Yeah. Well, uh, if we were in a different time, I would agree with you, but, and I, I'm not sure that we can be in a position, I guess what they'll say is beggars don't choose or something. And so I, if I didn't know him so well, I wouldn't feel the way, I feel the way that Mr. Donofro feels because of knowing him for so long. I've watched him come along, and, as I have a lot of people, other people out there in that, I've seen him come along as well. So, and, and maybe that's a, a mistake, but if it is, maybe it'll be a good mistake.
Not only is the person, the process.
Yes, I understand.
Okay.
Well, and, and this process where somebody else, uh, we're, we're looking at a process here that basically not even, not even a forum set that process, and I'm not, I, I never want to be that, but now I know there's probably a different process here than what the process I know. And I know, and where I, what a little bit of experience I have in Tallahassee, it's, I move, we raise a wave the rules and do this, so, and that's what I'm looking at here, the rules, and that's the reason I brought that up.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask the, the council a question?
Yes, sir.
Michelle, um, or Lilian or both, uh, it was, is there anything legally that would preclude us from offering this position to a person for a particular salary without going through, uh, any type of process, any kind of, uh, interview process, any kind of advertising process?
There's no state or federal requirement that you advertise for this position. Um, I provided handouts for you all, one is from the Board Association of County Managers and the other is that says that they're, they have a program that they offer to help you, um, with finding a new administrator. And then there's a, uh, Florida City slash County Manager Search Guide, says she would appropriate processes to follow, I'm not saying this isn't appropriate. Answer your question, no, I don't think there's any legal impediment, uh, it would just be unusual.
The only, only thing that I understood from Ms. Daniels, that she was a county employee, and that's what I think, that's what she told me, and I, what I, I've gone ahead with it.
Yes, I am a county employee, the, the county administrator has its own set of rules in chapter one twenty-five, though, that was what Michelle's referring to, is that you can technically appoint someone. Um, she's just saying it's unusual to not give the process, but not, it's not a legal issue, if I'm saying that right.
Well, this is, this to me is a little bit of a unique situation, uh, as we've all talked about, the timing is critical.
Yes.
Um, what also makes us a unique situation is that we've got someone that, uh, a-again, has got all of the qualifications, is local, understands the county, understands all of the municipalities, uh, to me, is, has got, um, a track record, uh, that we all agree is a, is an exemplary track record. So, this, this is a little bit of an unusual situation, and he's interested. And, uh, to me, that puts us in a, uh, in a unique situation, um, that, uh, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with that.
I was gonna say, man, none of us are indispensable, and this is not the, obviously not the only qualified person on God's merit. To them, I think he's the most qualified person.
I can say that, you have, you have a lot of talking about it. I know him.
Okay.
Know him.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm a little concerned that if we start the process of advertising, how many people are we gonna get to apply? Then you've got to determine how many people you're going to interview. And then you've got to determine when they'll be able to get interviewed. We're sitting in May. We're starting budget next month.
July.
July. We could very easily be still looking in August or September.
You think, yeah.
And that's, that's, that's what concerns me. That is the only thing.
Hire and turn it down, yeah. Well, I'll tell you how we can do that, gentlemen. We can have a vote right here and now, we can decide that. Is everybody in agreement, Dr. Spire, you're in agreement having a vote?
Well, I mean, if this is delicious, if the majority of the board, yes, I'm certainly okay with that, but, but.
I, 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 you, Mr. Chris, you feel that way?
No, I feel that I go ahead with it.
Yeah.
But, uh, hire him.
I, I guess my question would be, uh, if, if, if it is the consensus as a board to, to move forward with offering the position to, uh, Mr. Dean, um, I, I think we would need to have a salary in mind, um, that, uh, we could offer it, and, and then if he accepts, fine. If he, if he doesn't accept, then we certainly can step back and, and, you know, go to plan B.
One step forward, two back, that's alright, okay. Well, I, I'm looking at all this paperwork right here where it showed a salary, and, uh, so, without having said, I'll entertain a motion to move forward with Mr. Dean. And either, if it's the board's pleasure, if someone discusses a salary with him and see where we are, come back and we'll have another meeting here, and I guess in about a week won't be a matter of, Mr. Daniels.
Mr. Chairman, looking at this salary schedule that Ms. Daniels provided, it's some of them, some of them is a lot, lot higher than we could ever afford. And a few are lower, but not very many. I'd make a motion that we would offer him twenty, twenty a year with benefits.
Yeah, have a motion, or have a second?
One second.
Have a second.
And, and, and the benefits is as a regular county employee.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Let's do this by voice, though.
Open the motion again now.
Make a motion that we, that we offer him a salary of one hundred and twenty thousand plus benefits of a county employee. And, and I, and I mean, sick time, vacation time, holiday time.
Is that comparable to, I mean, I know the salary's not comparable if you make them, but you were getting those same benefits, same benefit.
Right, I mean, and it's not unusual for someone to come back with additional negotiations, like I, I had a travel stack and, you know, so don't be surprised if there's not a response with some additional request.
And that's, and as I say, you can think about viewing a bunch of people, you'd have to go through it again, and again, and again.
Anybody on the board want to go on here to help negotiate the salary with him?
I think you would, as, as chairman, you would need to do that if it involved any other commissioners, it would, uh, need to be an advertised meeting, so.
I'll take that.
I would say maybe you and, and Ms. Daniels, um, Lilian, would you, would that be something that you could do, sit in with that?
I'm happy to, that's what the board wants.
You'll say?
Alright, let's vote with a voice vote, start with, uh, District One, go to District Five.
Okay, I, I vote no.
Okay.
And I'd like to also, let's be a part of the minutes, please, that Mr. Donofro mentioned that he was the best qualified person. My position is that he's a qualified person, but I have no basis, I would just say he is the best. So, I think it should be interim positions, we've had time to study and offer other people the opportunities. For that reason, I have to vote no.
Can I make just a little bit of joke on the board? I don't know if Donald Trump's available or not, but anyway.
I don't have no problem.
Mr. Chris, yeah?
I don't have a problem with it.
You, you, oh, you're on the side of the A?
On the side of Jim Dean.
Alright.
I vote yes.
Mr. Don, vote?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, we move along, I'd be glad to be speaking with Ms. Daniels about.
Is that something we can do pretty quickly?
Yes, sir.
How can we can get to a point, you can get to a point where we know whether that's a, a go with Mr. Dean or whether it's not, and if it's not.
And notify, and notify the board. Yeah? That, alright, be, Mr. Brown?
Good one.
Yeah, alright, we've settled on that, well, now, what?
I don't have anything else, so if y'all have anything else.
Well, I, I do, I would like, again, you know, and now that we've seen this, uh, this information pertaining to the salary, it's, uh, uh, become, uh, uh, you know, obvious, uh, that Ms. Daniels has been a little bit underpaid for the last several years. Uh, I think it's, uh, it would be appropriate for us to maybe have a discussion. Uh, I think at, at, at the end of, uh, any county employee's, uh, time with the county, there's an opportunity for them to buy back, sell back their sick leave time, correct? Um, and you've got, I'm sure, sick leave time accumulated accrued? And what, what is the, what is the typical policy as far as?
The typical policy is, uh, the board buys back up to a quarter of the sick leave.
Well, you know, in light of the fact that we're offering roughly twenty thousand dollars more a year to, uh, Mr. Dean, which I think is an inappropriate salary, um.
I do too.
Yeah, and based on his experience, and, uh, I think, uh, based on the fact that Ms. Daniels was only making.
I'm leaving at ninety-six.
Ninety-six, I think there ought to be a consideration, maybe deviating from that, uh, policy to pay her, uh, a, uh, a higher percentage of her sick time in account for the fact that she's been somewhat underpaid for the last several years. Yeah.
And there again, I, I tend to agree with you also to say that hardly any of us up here said that, you know, we, we go about what someone else did in times gone by, so.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Will this opportunity be afforded to every other county employee? Because there's a lot of folks that will underpay. If they decide, if some other county employees decide to leave, would we make the same concession for him or her?
If we buy back sick leave for any employee, I would say that'd be fair, but I wouldn't want to give any extra money unless we're looking at it, the road department is a problem that I felt like we need to be working on. So, so we have a lot of problem losing employees, the call to make.
We, we can't just pick and choose, we gotta be fair with everybody. Nothing against you, Ms. Daniels, you know, true, you deserve it, but if we're gonna give, make a special exception in your case, that every other county employee needs to have that same exception made.
Well, if I could just interject, Mr. Chairman, um, that I actually am not, um, asking for a, a special treatment, in my opinion, and, and there's a, a few distinctions here, one, the county administrator is a completely separate governing, um, appointment by the Board of County Commissioners, and I, I just happen to have been a longstanding county employee, that's why I have the same provisions as other county employees, you don't have to do that. Um, and secondly, I have talked to Dr. or to Mr. Donofro about this, um, specifically because, um, I only have the amount of sick leave I have because of, of not using it over the years, uh, including, uh, giving up an early maternity leave for Hurricane Michael. And I'm not asking for any kind of pat on the back for that, but I do think it would be a really generous thing the board could do for me on my way out the door to recognize that sacrifice. Um, and in light of the fact that I actually am recommending a much higher salary if you're an ex-county administrator, um, no hard feelings, I'm happy to do that, I think that they, that, that it's warranted based on the, the salary survey, but it's a small gesture that the county could do on my way out, so.
But would that not entail, and this is legal, would that not entail having to rewrite the personnel journal to some degree?
It would not, because the county administrator is a contract position, so she negotiated for her benefits. There's no other county employee that is under a contract that way.
Ethically and goodwill, it's just not the thing you ought to do.
You're also, uh, hiring someone from a different, I don't know how old Mr. Dean is, he may be in a protected class, but, uh, there's certainly some comparison to be made as to how you compensated a female county administrator versus the male county administrator who didn't go through any sort of interview or other process, that.
But all in all, it's a pleasure to the board, is that correct?
It is.
That's all I have to say.
That's fine, that's alright, we appreciate what you say. Or I do, anyway. Alright.
Again, I think, you know, the county administrator is in a, again, a unique position with a lot of, a lot of responsibility. Um, you know, again, I've, I've only, I've only been a county, uh, county commissioner for four and a half years, but, uh, in my time of working with Ms. Daniels, uh, she has, uh, exhibited, uh, you know, hard work, as I said earlier, you know, high degree of professionalism, um, and I, I, again, now that we've had the study, and, and actually, I had, had intended, uh, to bring this up to the board at some point during budget, during this next budgetary session, uh, that I felt like Ms. Daniels was, was being underpaid, based on the job that she's done and based on comparative, you know, salaries of administrators across the state, and, uh, and this is just further evidence that, uh, over the last several years that she's been underpaid. And I, I agree with Commissioner Spires that, uh, uh, we've got probably a lot of people, um, that are, work for the county that are underpaid, um.
I agree.
Uh, but, uh, you know, I, I would put in the form of a motion, uh, that we, uh, buy back Ms. Daniels' sick leave at the, not at a quarter, but the full, full price, um, I don't, what, what would that end up being, you said that you were gonna throw?
It's around twenty-six thousand dollars.
About twenty-six thousand dollars?
For the total amount.
I think when you look at where her salary has been, where it probably should have been, at least for the entire time that I've been here, that, uh, would make up for some of the, the hundred, underpaying, uh, that, uh, she's been dealing with.
Ms. Daniels, did they advertise when you were hired, or you, they just hired you?
They, they advertised.
Right, I didn't know that.
Do you, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Uh, in your salary, is that a certain salary, no matter how many hours you work?
Yes.
So, you don't get everything?
That's correct.
Where, well, most boys do get paid everything.
But if they're not exempt, yes. How many exempted employees?
That's the way it is in the weather.
Another reason.
That's the way it is in the weather.
You what?
That's the way it is in the weather. That's the way it is in the web today. Candy canes.
And we, we do buy, buy back other county employees' sick leave.
In other words, at a quarter.
Part of their sick leave.
Yeah.
That would be part of, if it's a little over, it'd be some cost you work, could have worked overtime or something, just a general.
Yes. For all county employees, if we buy back their sick time at the end of their employment, it's at a quarter of what they have.
Correct.
Twenty-five percent.
If they worked over ten years, I think.
Over ten years?
Mm-hmm.
You've been here how many years altogether?
Eighteen.
Eighteen years, yeah.
Six or seven as an administrator.
Seven.
I just think it's a fair thing to do. And so, you know, like again, I've got a motion on the floor to buy back her sick leave time at a hundred percent instead of twenty-five percent.
How much sick time, oh, twenty-six thousand? How's that?
A motion in a second to buy back Ms. Daniels' leave time in full. That the way you want to say it. All in favor, raise that.
I'm in opposition. And again, nothing against you personally. We can't do a fair right. I would, I would enjoy being county commissioner, but without the roads and bridge department, I have nobody. I'm, I'm really stupid, but then I'm doing the job that they need to do, so they're important as well.
No, all county employees are important. I think, we just need to work on trying to help the road department try to get their salary up a little bit.
I rise to the point of personal privilege. I think every employee works for Jack from Yada, Florida, as good as it is. And sometimes I might tell you if you're not, but if I do, I do, I'll say it all, and just the point that we might need that. But I appreciate everyone, I've only been here six months. And to be honest with you, some of this stuff I'm looking at on this paperwork is not what I would have expected, but at the same time, I appreciate every board member here, and I appreciate every person that works here. And it'll make it everybody sweep the floor. I sweep the floor, my thing. But anyway, I thank you for being there, and you can spread that on the record and let anyone know. Thank you. Even if I can't sit down real. Is there anything else anybody wants to take up?
What, did we go?
Sir.
Yeah, we did, we did.
Commissioner Spire's voted.
I know a young man, I don't remember that.
Well, yeah, they asked me.
Appreciate you.